Motion to remove the regular agenda, item number 10.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Items removed. Could I get a motion on these next two?
Motion to add to the regular agenda, items seven and 12.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Could I get a motion to adopt the amended agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
We got it. We got it first and second. Can we get a vote? We have an agenda. We've got the minutes of the August 16th public hearing and regular meeting minutes. An opportunity to look at any corrections, additions, or changes. If not, could I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2022.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I believe you have a presentation, Ms. Bishop. Is someone doing that?
Yes, that will be me. We have a proclamation tonight to recognize the month of September as Camden County Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote suicide prevention resources available to our community. We have a unified goal of recognizing the mental health needs of those around us. And whereas suicide has been recognized as a significant public health issue, and over 320 people went to the Camden Campus of Southeast Georgia Health System Emergency Department in 2021 for mental health-related problems, and 772 calls made to Camden 911 that were classified mental disorder, overdose, suicidal, suicide investigation. Twelve suicides occurred in Camden County. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, coworkers, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas suicide is preventable by knowing how to start the conversation, listen, and provide support to someone in need, we can save lives and hope help and healing are possible. Mental health and crisis intervention services are available in Camden County, including the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline at 988. And now therefore, the Camden County Board of Commissioners to hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens, government agencies, schools, and healthcare providers to raise awareness of the mental health resources and support services available, and encourage all those in need to seek care and treatment necessary for a long and healthy life. And I believe we have Ms. April Jeans, the Executive Director of Family Connection Camden here.
Yes.
If you could come up and we'll... There's that proclamation. And we'll get a picture of them.
Do you have y'all up here to comment or say anything? We don't want to hold you back.
Just, we have a mental health resource guide.
Come on up there so that everybody can hear you.
If anybody does need mental health or resources, if you go to the Camden Suicide Prevention Coalition Facebook page, you can find a mental health resource guide for local providers.
Could they hear that? You could have picked up? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment sections. Anybody registered, Ms. Bishop?
Yes, sir. First up is Mr. Nelson Cummings.
Mr. Cummings. Yeah, thank you. There we admit while I make this podium. Oh, I made it. You made it. I just want to spend a couple of minutes on coming about Camden County and Camden County residents and the status of it. You know, since the COVID ordeal here and funding being allocated to help citizens of Camden County to get through this ordeal on many, many fronts in many, many ways. As concerned citizen, my question was, especially to this commission, what has been your position on ensuring that residents of Camden County were able to take full advantage and prosper from the funds allocated to better themselves and to be able to help themselves through the ordeal? With funding given, there has not been the same, and maybe you can correct me on this, but seemingly Camden County residents have not been able to prosper greatly from the funding allocated for the shortcomings that were created by the COVID situation. And when I say that, let me expand a little bit, and maybe I'm off center a little bit, but you can correct me if you need to. Because there have sort of been services on many, many fronts provided or made available to them to help them through that. Things like help with housing assistance, rental assistance. From what I understand, and I'll give you a snapshot of this, over 500 families had evictions paid against them. Where did these people go? Where was the funding that was supposedly made available to aid the system to help them not get in that position and to better themselves and their families to help them get out of these holes? We didn't see that. There were over 800 eviction notices served, as far as I know, and you can correct me on that. But more than 500 actually done. These people had no opportunity to improve themselves or their family. We don't know where they are. That seems to be a shortcoming on what was intended by these funds. More importantly, each of you commissioners up there represent every community member. Over 50,000 people. Where the neighborhood improvement? Where is it? Haven't seen any neighborhood improvements. I haven't seen a light fixture. A street paved. What about our young people? Something to help them feel that they are a part of and will be a part of Camden's future. You know, we graduated over 500 people every year out of Camden County High School. Where are these young people at? Talented and gifted. They can give back to the community, help grow our community. There doesn't seem to be a vested interest put into our young people. We have areas that have dilapidation, no growth, you know, housing issues. People can't have not been able to improve themselves yet. We've had funding allocated to help with all of those things. And as a citizen of Camden County who lives here, what is the direction or the intent to grow this community? Where is the opportunity for distribution and manufacturing jobs? Any job coming to Camden County, any opportunity of employment is a blessing to this county. How do we keep our young people here? How do we invest in them? What is the commission's stance on helping our community grow? Where are they? We have housing go up. People can't move with the housing or better housing. It seems like there's a concerted effort to keep desperation in despair into the lowland communities. They're under privilege, disadvantaged. But it affects all of Camden County. All of it. Our young people leave here every year because they don't have these opportunities. So can anyone on the commission comment on how is Camden County growing? Where's the help at? It's been over two years. And I can name several areas around the county. I have not seen any local improvement in the neighborhood. This is the same way it was 30 years ago. Lights out, streets broken, no new payments. We still have kids. Our students walk in the streets with no sidewalks, getting to school buses or schools or walking home. In those areas where seemingly should be looked at and should be invested in, but it has not happened.
We'll have to get you to wrap it up, Mr. Cummings. You've been going right.
Well, my question... And I'll wrap it up. I just wanted a few minutes, but I just want to ask a question. What can you tell us? How can we improve this? What is the intent to improve this? We still have people going to embossment. They can't get a ride to embossment. They get there the best way they can. That is the most egregious safety component I can think of. And it's been going on over 10 years that I know. The funding was made available to this county for those very improvements to ensure that the residents of this county and its all residents were able to benefit and prosper from it.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to have to ask you to bring it to hall. We're not going to get into a dialogue back and forth. That's not how we do this. If you would like, after the meeting, you know, we can talk, and I'll get with Eric, who helps manage some of those funds, and we can talk to you about some things that we've been doing.
Well, I appreciate what I'm just saying, because I have not seen it. You say what we're doing, but to my notion, maybe I'm wrong. Has been busy with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Ben Goff.
No, you don't get six minutes. I said, no, you don't get six minutes. You're a frequent flyer.
I have an agenda item. My name is Ben Goff, and I'm from Harris Bluff, the big city of... There is an agenda item here that I'm... There are several, really, but I'm only going to look at one of them. That would be item number five. Approval to buy out two leased John Deere 670G motor graders for the Public Works Department. I distinctly remember being in this same hall when we determined that it was more feasible to lease those. So how much does it cost us now to lease them for a couple, three years, and now we want to buy them out? That's my comment there. I know you're not going to address it. It's a matter of management. The other item I have happens to be on the executive session. I just gave you my last copy of it. But basically, I had somebody in McDonald's earlier in the week ask me a question about executive sessions. And apparently, I don't know the answer. And I'm not going to address that specific question. But it has to do with when and where and who has the approval to engage in the current litigation that we have going on in several instances with the county. You know, and I told the person there, I said, as far as I know, it takes five commissioners, or at least three of the five commissioners, to address that and to vote in favor of that litigation. But I can't prove that because I can't find it anywhere. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricky Manning.
Rick Manning from Bullhead. This is a follow-up on a statement I read from a citizen at last meeting so that Ms. Bishop would have copies. And it has been amended. I wrote my notes on it with their permission. It was then turned over to a group of concerned high school students.
Is this an agenda item? I mean, I'm just trying to figure which one you're talking about.
I asked to be on the agenda, emailed and everything else. This is the only way I can get up to speak, sir.
I mean, the first meeting is reserved for agenda items. So that way, the folks that are here on agenda business, we can kind of move through it. Now, if you've got something you want to go off, something that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to speak at the second meeting, at the second.
Yeah, I asked why you didn't put me on the agenda when it was requested two weeks ago.
I do not control that, so I don't want to be that.
Who controls it then?
I did not say you were trying to be on the agenda. Well, unless you're...
You know what? If this is where you want to be, Mr. Blunt, you don't want to hear from the citizens, don't want to hear nothing, that's fine with me. We'll take it up legally.
Uh, thanks, sir.
Three months is almost up end.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
No, sir.
Does anyone else desire to address the board on an agenda item? Let me reiterate. Seeing none. Let's move into our agenda. I believe at this point, right now, we need to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing. Could I get a motion on that?
I make a motion. We adjourned a regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. Is that you, Mr. Joey?
No, that would... I can do this one.
Okay, hold on.
The most public hearing is to receive public comments on the addition of amendments to the Official Code of Camden County, Part One, Related Laws, Section 703 to 710 Hotel Motel Taxation. And if you do remember, we just recently had a work session on this, and the outcome of that was to move the hotel motel tax from 3% to 5%.
To go into 5% per fence, it'd be in...
Yes.
No legislation.
Right. And those were run in the newspaper according to legal requirements. And I also ran them as display ads versus legal ads so to get more exposure and businesses would be aware of it.
Yes. All right. Is there anyone desiring to speak from the public concerning this hotel motel tax who are in speak in favor of it? Is anyone desiring to speak in opposition to it? At this point, could I get a motion to adjourn? Does anybody on the board have anything? I think we went over it pretty extensively in our work session, so I think we all understand where we are. At this point, does any... Could we get a motion to adjourn the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting?
So moved.
There's another second. There's a second.
Got a different position, go to second.
Yeah. 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 Just read just a little further. I'd have seen that, wouldn't I? Yeah. So we're going to have to withdraw your motion.
I withdraw.
Now, Joey is walking up. He's creeping up here for some reason. He's for public hearing number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. First item will be a request for special use approval to allow a two-family dwelling on a multifamily zone parcel. This parcel is currently 2.3 acres and located at 1699 Musch Bluff Road. The owner has submitted plans to split this parcel into two one-acre tracts with the intent to build one duplex on each parcel. The Planning Commission recommends approval with the condition that the Department of Health reviews and approves the plat and site plan.
Okay. Is there anyone desiring to speak in favor? Please come up, give your name and address, and tell us.
How's everybody? John R. Davis. I own this property. I live at 451 Cord Lane in Kingsland. I'm desiring to get this special use so I can put these duplexes there and take that old dwelling down. Pretty simple. That's it.
Sounds like an improvement.
I think so. I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone desiring to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Give us your next one.
Next item, we have a request for special use approval to allow an additional home on a property that is 1.4 acres. This property is owned agricultural residential and located on Brown... According to Sections 318 of our Unified Development Code, a property that's owned AF or AR requires three acres for one additional single-family dwelling. So since this parcel is 1.4 acres, it requires a special use for an additional home. The Department of Health does approve of this, and the Planning Commission does as well.
You said, "does" support this?
They do. They have approved the site plan and the septu- take, an additional septu- take.
Okay. Anyone here desiring to speak in favor of this?
I'm Brandon Horn. I currently live at 55 Brown Town Road with my mom and dad, and we are trying to put another home on the property for me and my family and look forward to having our own home in Camden. Thank you.
All right. Welcome back to Camden, then. All right. Is anyone desiring to speak in opposition? The board have any last questions? If not, that it?
Yes, sir.
Y'all going to let me now adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting? Ben?
So moved.
Second. This will go. All those in favor? We're now in a regular meeting. You're still here.
Yes, sir. It's a request for special use approval to allow a two-family dwelling on a multifamily zone parcel. This property is 2.3 acres and located. The Planning Commission recommends approval with the condition that the Department of Health reviews and approves the site plan as well as the plat.
Could we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the condition the Planning Commission's recommended.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Number two.
Next item, a request for special use approval to allow an additional home on a property that is 1.4 acres. This property is owned agricultural residential and located on Brown Town Road. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We got a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Yakobachi. Ms. Magnetti.
Good evening, Commissioners. Get this stack here. I've got five agenda items here this evening. The first one is the approval to purchase a new 2022 John Deere Baco. This was part of our budgeted item. It is to replace a 2005 Cat Baco. The consideration to approve the purchase for it would be from John Deere. We will use the current 2005 Cat Baco to trade in. There is a trade-in value of $28,000 with it, which is also helping on the price. We were able to get a standard... We went with a 60-month, 2,500-hour warranty on the unit because of the length of time and service that we will have it. We did receive quotes from Cat and John Deere, and luckily, John Deere actually has one on the ground.
Imagine that.
Which is a miracle right now and today, but it is actually lower cost as well. So trading this unit allows us to reduce the capital expense. It is an item that we use every single day.
Yeah. Just for the public consumption, what's the trade-in value on it?
The trade-in value of the 2005 now is $28,000.
Okay.
We'll go towards it. So the purchase price is $85,000 for this unit.
Okay. All right. What a $47,000 difference.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Never mind.
Okay.
I'm just doing some quick math in my head. Does anyone have any questions or...
With the warranty, do y'all typically get travel time and mileage included in that warranty? Or is it just like a standard powertrain hydraulic?
It's going to be standard normally. I mean, we would take it up there to them unless it's something that they can come out to the field if we can... You know, most of the time, we can prove, and they'll cover the trip down to us.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a first and a second. Those in favor? Motion carries.
Okay. Second agenda item is the approval to purchase a new 2022 Cat Mini Excavator. This price is $108,443. We will trade in the 2015 unit that we have. The Mini Excavator is also a machine that we use almost every single day and has multiple attachments and can do different things. We originally budgeted $125,000 to replace a bulldozer in fiscal year '22. And unfortunately, due to time and pricing, that's just not realistic, and it's not an item that we use as frequently. So we changed it to put this request in. The Cat 2015 Cat Baco has a trade-in value of $48,000. There is a 36-month, 1,500-hour warranty on it. The new cost of dozers now is $340,000. So that was not realistic to spend this year. So the difference between the John Deere and the Cat Mini Excavator is the John Deere does have two hydraulic pumps, one that actually controls the walking of the machine and one that controls the hydraulics and the attachments. So it does... It is a lot better, and Cat does not actually... Or excuse me, John Deere does not offer that option at this time.
So you're saying the Cat has two pumps?
The Cat has two hydraulic pumps. The John Deere does not. So their unit isn't comparable.
That must be a 309?
Yes. And so the delivery for this one would be January or February. Essentially, the budgeted savings from the motor graders and Bacos that we had planned on in our original budget is $41,000. And we also auctioned the mower max this year for $45,000. So we have basically $86,800 that I'm putting towards the $108,000 of other resources.
Okay, so we're out 60, is what you're saying?
Uh, 22, $22,000.
So it's 108, and we have 48 trade-in?
86. Yeah, 48 for the trade-in. Yes, I'm sorry.
48 for the trade-in.
The trade-in's already valued on there. The unit itself, I think, was $156,000.
Okay.
Then less the $48,000 for trade-in value leaves it at $108,000.
Okay, good view.
Yeah. I got a quick question. What's your staff level look like as far as maintenance? Do you have like one dedicated mechanic that does all your service? Or, you know, is that a position that's vacant? Or what's that look like?
We use the same County Fleet Services Department that all the rest of the departments have. Typically, it's staffed with three full-time technicians. Right now, we have two, and I just placed an offer. So we'll have a third one starting. They do all the preventative maintenance and repairs for every vehicle in the county.
Okay.
Every owned asset that's...
Yeah. No, that makes sense on a big scale. The only reason I was asking, you know, for myself, like on a smaller scale, a lot of these companies now offer a preventative maintenance plan where the only thing you have to do is just put fuel in it and all the minor, you know, grease and stuff like that, where the machine, since it's connected via Wi-Fi or, you know, it'll pop up, you know, hey, a thousand hours, time to change the oil or whatever, versus the traditional way of, you know, having to rely on a mechanic to check hours and operators and that kind of stuff, so.
We have in the Public Works Department, I require everybody to turn in a vehicle inspection report every day with the hours and mileage of the equipment. And I have a spreadsheet that I keep the office manager updates every day so I know exactly when everything is due for their preventative maintenance. And I get with Fleet Services and make sure that they get it on the schedule. So all of our preventative...
Yeah, and I think there should be some operator input there in that, you know, just checking your fluid levels, you know, just looking it over.
Right.
You start relying on... Now, they just get on and climb and go to ride.
Right. They do all their own greasing. Every piece of equipment has a grease gun on it and is there. And we've got inspections.
Okay.
So there is a high level of accountability to maintain these pieces of equipment.
Your existing attachments will work with this machine?
Yes. I already verified that.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Item number four.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You just had a shopping spree today.
The third agenda item is the approval to buy out two leased John Deere motor graders. This was also a budgeted line item that we put in. We leased the three John Deere motor graders in 2018 and '19 to replace older units. The units that we had replaced at the time did not have very high trade-in values. We budgeted $363,000 in FY '23. At this point, they're down to $357,000 because we did make an additional payment. The motor graders will last our department an average of 10 years and still have good... The motor graders will last our department an average of 10 years and still have good trade-in value as we saw on the other two used ones that we bought. We will save $23,000 by purchasing these two now, purchasing them out early before the end of their lease. And due to the.
The lease with us?
I'm sorry?
The lease with us?
Yes. So due to the years of the useful asset life, it makes more sense now to trade them. It doesn't make sense to trade them out and get new ones that we would just purchase them.
We have built, we've built equity with the lease.
Yes, sir.
What's the percentage that I guess we're getting credit for or like the equity?
So what it was, I think, and I didn't put that in here. So we already had a buyout price at five years. So we could either continue paying for five years and then still.
The lease with the purchase off, obviously.
Right. And it would still end up being like $130,000 at the end of five years versus buying them out now.
Whereas instead of making, we'd be making lease payments for another.
Two years.
So.
So we're saving the interest on two more years of payments.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right. Anyone here to make a motion on this, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The fourth agenda item is the Kingsland Bypass Phase Two Work Authorization Supplement Number Six. I know we just had one supplement a couple of weeks ago. This is a supplement that will be reimbursed. The expense is $22,821, but the Georgia Department of Transportation will reimburse us. The Georgia Department of Transportation is requesting a value engineered study because the project is now estimated to go over $50 million. And that is required in the preliminary field plan review. If a project goes over $50 million, they have to have it valued and engineered. So we are already in an agreement with Atlas. They have already been in contact with the Georgia Department of Transportation. And they are the ones that provided us the cost estimate of what it will cost to prepare all of the documents. And then once they prepare all of the documents, we give it back to Georgia Department of Transportation. They conduct the value engineer study with their consultants. And then I'm sure I will be back again to talk about Kingsland Bypass Phase Two.
So at this point right now with these additional items, they're paying for them?
Correct.
And it's conditioned to the contract, I'm sure. So can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries.
Okay. The final agenda item is the approval to award the contract for Sheffield Cemetery Road Recycled Asphalt Millings. This was also a budgeted expense, one of the road projects that we put in for Splo State at the beginning of the year. This has been a road that, at this point, all of the homes on that road and other private roads are full. And they have a lot of traffic and it is high maintenance to maintain and keep going. They have one ingress and egress in and out of this neighborhood with a whole lot of traffic. So this.
Is what we budgeted it for originally?
I planned on $100,000. So it came in under, under the budget with the three proposals that we received. So we received three competitive bids and which I had attached in the agenda. I'm making a recommendal, recommendation to go with the lowest responsible responsive bidder, which was AGS Solutions for $73,100. We have already done the prep work for the road as far as changing out cross pipes that needed to be changed. We cut the bushes back. We went it through and did all of that work so that once they go in and do the installation and compaction of the millings.
And with our conversation, you told me that we have put how many tons of rock on that road over the last, how many years?
A little over 100,000 of GAB and number four rock in the last five to 10 years. So.
So it's been a maintenance road?
Yes.
And of course, at this point right now, you know, with all the rock and gravel that's been added, it's pretty, it's relatively stable. It'll be a good time to put these millings on it.
Correct.
And all of that line, we had a conversation today too about, looking at some of the bids that she's fixing to point out. You know, our only local bidder was the Ellis Brothers. And it was at 93,000, wasn't it?
90,000. We have two locals.
Who?
Two locals and one.
They were in the nineties. And then the East Coast out of Douglas was.
Was 140 for a thousand.
140. And then this one's at 73, which made me question, there's some math problems going on here somewhere. And, you know, I just, not to doubt Ms. McNamee at all, I said, I would like to look at some of the quantities. And she went back and looked at the quantities. She had looked at, she had already done a projection of what she thought the quantities of the millings based on, you understand. And the bid that came in, the 73, is in line with those quantities. And I know the Ellis Brothers, which was, she had come up with 1,027.
Yes, sir.
And the bid that's in now is 1,050. You know, there's some shrinkage and whatnot. But I think the Ellis Brothers had a 1.5 in there.
1,500. 1,530.
And I don't know, that's why I said I was trying to understand. But then there was traffic control and this and that and, you know, how much traffic control you really going to have out there? I guess the point I'm trying to say here is that I try to support our local contractors whenever possible. And I wanted to look at it from a, well, first of all, I want to make sure that low bid wasn't so low that we get into this project, you come back and say, oh, we missed it, you know, but we've already got our, boy, I got our rate set. And I'm just going to get a change order. And there we are back at 97,000 dollars. So I'm saying all that to say this, you better figure out how to do it with $73,000 because if you coming back for another bite to apple, might not, might not fare too well. His quantities do come in line. Other disparities were tremendous amounts for traffic control, which I don't think is really much of an issue. It's not that, the whole project timeline is what?
Three to four days.
Three, four days. Just say a week on the outside. I mean, I think even they had what, 17,000 for traffic control, which I think is probably 15,000 and high.
And grading. I think there was an initial grading because they do have to crown the road and grade property as well.
But anyway, just, just for pointing out that we'd kind of, we'd kind of gone over this. And in case those questions came up, does anybody else have any questions?
Also, bid packages, do they submit, you know, examples like past work where they've done something like this or just kind of serious?
Yes, they have. The references were required that you can check on the references that have to be similar, like scope of work.
Okay.
You got people created that to catch her. Anything else? Can we get a motion for Smack to me?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Landon?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. Eric's coming up. And just as a note, in case I forget, would you have a conversation with Mr. Cummings?
Absolutely.
Toward the end of, at the end of the meeting, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Commissioners, Eric Landon, right before you this evening, a request to adopt a resolution for the county to join the American Flood Coalition. This is an organization that focuses on solutions for flooding, sea level rise, storms, whatever would cause flooding. And the county is very progressive in this. We've been a member of the CRS program for quite some time to great success by reducing everyone's flood insurance policies. But we've also recently adopted a resiliency implementation work program. And then we are in the process of remodeling the old Georgia Power building to the Resiliency Center. So the county is very much on the forefront of looking at being proactive instead of reactive when it comes to flooding. So joining this organization would, would help us collaborate with cities, counties, and other organizations that are of like mind and allows us to, to share these ideas. And it was a showcase on those items that are successful. Hopefully, we will be able to share in some of those successes. There's several communities in Florida, Jacksonville, St. John's, Miami, and then several up the Carolina coast as well. I believe we would be the first in the state of Georgia to join. And as you can see in some of the material, if you invest a dollar in mitigation upfront, it saves you a great load of money if you react after a disaster strikes. So what we're looking at is smart planning, smart infrastructure investment. And anyway, with that, I'll take any questions.
Who knows how to get in the weeds a little more? You or Chuck? I see Chuck sitting there. Chuck, you on the next thing or this part of you? All right. So let's get in the weeds just a little bit. That sounds great. Now tell me, how's that going to impact us? What are we going, how are we going, what are we going to do with that? Are we, what money are we investing? What are we, are we buying something or paying for something?
Forgot to mention the most important part. It's free. There's no, there's no fee to join.
And nothing free, baby.
But what I think, what I think what we should find is it'll help us, you know, if Julie's looking for grants, it'll get, I think it'll help us as the CRS program grows and expands. And I think it'll help us when we open this resiliency center. I think it'll just open conversations with other organizations and other communities that are preparing for the future, which is storms, sea level rise.
Considering the fact that we're sitting right here on the coast, we have a historic city on the coast.
Yes.
Obviously, we're, we have a very expensive military base, which obviously we're not paying for, but still, it's here. And it certainly impacts us. I'm gathering that being part of this coalition will keep us in the loop and ahead of, ahead of the curve and knowing what's coming down the back and things that we can do to prepare prospectively for it.
Correct. And this organization actually reached out to us. They overheard us talking about the Resiliency Center at some conference. And then we spoke with them in Washington DC. And they've worked with several governors, the governor of South Carolina, the governor of Florida, on trying to find solutions in the policy world instead of just, you know, non-funded programs. So they're involved in DC and then they're looking, they're looking to be more proactive approach.
All right. All right. Well, let me get back to where the beginning is. So you're looking, you're looking for options, like to join the thing. Anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We got a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. You can get your, you can get your badge now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. My purpose is to request Board of Commissioners consider the approval and purchase of one mobile medical field clinic office from Elite Aluminum Corporation Forts out of Coconut Creek, Florida in the amount of $174,995. Funding source is ARPA. I've got a little quick video clip I'm going to show you. And, and as that video clip is rolling, I'm going to provide you a little bit of background. Go ahead. So this is a fully deployable, capable, provides 456 square feet, HVAC, five electrical outlets. Can be configured any way you want it. But it provides you a capability to get on the ground and do a number of mission sets. First and foremost, to support anything related to pandemic, vaccines, testing. One of the issues that we had and we experienced during COVID-19 in both 19 and 20, or I'm sorry, 20 and 21, is the fact that we had to push everybody into the clinic that might have been infected, that were there, that could have been symptomatic or non-symptomatic to get tested or to get, you know, for potentially vaccine. And so what we're looking for is a capability to get out of the clinic, have field capability, but do a lot of other mission sets with it. So, you know, I'll give you a quick example of where this would have validity. Localized flooding, Satilla-St. Mary's River. We've got a number of houses, families affected. You can put this on the ground, put the right people inside of it, put your faith-based, put your emergency management in. Insurance folks can be there to meet, to put the word out, come to this one location. When the tornado touched down in St. Mary's, it was chaotic at best. It was choppy on services. There was debris everywhere. People literally walking out to the road to flag us down to say, can someone help me? How do I get connected? Having had the ability to put this on the ground in a parking lot, is an example, near the St. Mary's Elementary School, put out a code red message saying, this is open. This is a one-stop shop. Come there, we'll do an intake on you, we'll know who you are, and we'll know what your unmet needs are. This capability does not exist in Camden County. So for us, this is a critical capability. We presented this project to the board under the ARPA projects in the amount of $175,000. Facts, the Elite Corporation Forts is a sole-source manufacturer. This can be pulled with any light-duty pickup. It's 8,000 pounds unit trailer combined. So your average, you know, one F-150 Chevy 1500 will pull this thing all day long. So it doesn't require any special anything. I'm recommending approval for the purchase of the FGM 20C Forts Custom Two-Ton Model Mobile Medical Field Clinic Office.
So you're saying that Trevor can pull it with his GMC Chevrolet 9500?
Yes, sir.
Look, but we can trade in your 250 for a 150?
No, that's actually Bill's vehicle. So I have no vehicle.
Oh, go ahead, lady. I'm sorry.
Sir.
Chuck, I noticed that you're bringing a power cord. And so it does not have this on generator.
No, sir, it does. It comes with a Honda generator on it, fully functioning up and running. We'd want, run wireless for any services that we're providing.
If there's, if there's a, was it a 50 amp service?
Yeah. No, actually, it's 30 amp.
30 amp?
I don't see the generator in the picture, does it?
Yes, sir. It's just not shown on it. Yes, sir. They're showing a shore power. It does come with shore power capability. If you want to put it outside of a building and you didn't want people going in, once you configure that for that receptacle, you can run it off shore power.
So it's either way?
Yes, sir.
And antenna on?
No, sir.
In here it says mobile medical field clinic, but it's.
You can do anything. If the county had a need, if we had things going on and citizens are affected in some way, somewhere in this county, and it's not a county-wide incident where you'd be opening up like the PSA Rec Center as a disaster assistance, disaster recovery, that's where this focused capability presents itself to allow the public to come to you. You give them a one-stop shop. I can't tell you enough, and for those of you, and I know, Mr. Reddick, you were involved in the tornado recovery, very chaotic and people were literally saying, who can help me?
I was down there.
Yeah, we want to have that capability. I want to open the doors. You come to us. We set up in your area and we operate.
We've had two tornadoes in this county. We had one at Point Peter years ago. And we stayed down there for a week because of that same situation. You had nothing like this. No communication, no nothing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And, you know, it's, it's, it's for countywide.
Right.
You know, it doesn't matter whether it's St. Mary's, Kingsland, Brown Town, Waverly or where. It's not just something for.
Yes, sir.
County use only. Anybody got any other questions, thoughts, ideas? If not, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, John.
Yes, I did. All right, Ms. Bishop.
This is to waive the first reading of the addition of an amendments to the Official Code of Camden County, Part One Related Laws, Section 703, 710, Hotel Motel Taxation that we previously just had a public hearing for. It will come back again on September 20th for a second public hearing and then the second reading and adoption for consideration.
So it'll come back for adoption on the 20th, 20th?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to waive the first reading of the addition and the amendments to the Official Code of Camden County related to laws and articles, Section 703, 710, Hotel Motel Taxation.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. At this point, could I get a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, convene a solid waste authority meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. We now have a, could I get a motion on the addition of the Solid Waste Authority Agenda Item Number Two?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Did I get a motion on the adoption of the amended Solid Waste Authority Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. You have your minutes of the last July 19th meeting. Any questions, comments? Can I get a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. We have a, moved the minutes. This brings to our first public comment section on Solid Waste Authority concerning items on the agenda. Does anyone rest with this, Bishop?
No, sir.
Anyone desiring to speak on the Solid Waste Authority? Anyone desiring to speak on the Solid Waste Authority Agenda? See you in, uh, is Mr. Barclay here?
I think Amanda's gonna have it.
Amanda.
Come on up, Amanda. That's right, he did tell me. I'm sorry.
They're completely fine.
I talked with him yesterday, forgot.
All right, is this loud enough?
I'm sorry?
Is this loud enough? All right.
Yeah.
Never mind. All right. So starting off with the timber project, um, so what we are doing is we are, um, looking to renew our agreement with them so we can reforest the areas that we harvested last year. Um, in addition, we are looking to have, um, use them to help us make a forest management plan for us. And this will include thinning, reforestation, harvesting more timber and improving site conditions. Um, not, let's see, and it will exceed thirty dollars an acre for reforestation.
All right. Now, do we have any idea what the projected revenue is?
Not at this time. That is not to my knowledge.
Being proved or not. All right. Anybody got any questions? I ain't leaning, our resident expert.
No, we've been through it many times in the past. We harvest and replant in that place. That's what he's doing. This guy just acts as, as an advisor.
Right, and I, I went over pretty extensively with Kevin, although I forgot he was gonna be, he wasn't gonna be here, but nonetheless, yeah, it's pretty.
The, uh, thirty dollars an acre not to exceed, is that to, you know, prep the site and replant? Or just one or the other?
I believe it's both.
Okay.
Actually, it's supervision. He's, he's gonna handle it for it. You gotta go out for bid and everything to get the work.
Okay, that's his speed.
Thirty dollars an acre ain't gonna, ain't gonna play a free.
I thought that was extremely loud.
You want, you want to get on that deal?
I wanted to.
Thank you.
Same numbers, yes.
All right.
I like a good opportunist. All right. Anything else? Anybody got any, anything else concerning this? All right. Let me go to you. Second one there?
All right, the second one is a change order for our contract with the P. Brothers on our cell eight A, um, CND construction. Um, what we'd be doing is deducting certain things from the contract. The first thing we'll be deducting from is removing the permanent grassing on the cell eight construction. Instead of having them do it, we'll be completing it with Camden County Resources and staff. And the second thing that we'll be removing is removing the usage of permanent road materials, fabric and rock on the, um, on the road that'll be, um, being completed. Well, two of them together, um, will end up saving us from the contract one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollar, um, thousand dollars approximately. And the removal of the permanent road construction material is just do, that material is not possible for the contractors to get.
All right. Somehow I've managed to mess myself up here on my computer. Not that gum, and I'm gonna stick with this thing. Ain't letting it whoop.
Give you some motions on it?
Yeah, we've, uh, well, this is, we're in a, we're in a hearing on this, right?
Yeah.
Right. All right, is there anyone desiring to speak in favor, against, or whatever?
We're not in a hearing. All we gotta do is.
Oh, we're not. I thought we were in a hearing.
No. We need a motion.
I'm gonna need a motion on these items.
Make a motion with approved agreement for, uh, the timber marketing, uh, rest, reforestation and consulting, our management service.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries.
Number two.
Yeah.
In the world.
Approve the change order for the project with, uh, Pete Brothers, Inc.
Second. Uh, quick question. That, that removal of the, you know, area of the road, you know, I asked Kevin and he said that was an area, just for clarification, that we probably wouldn't need to access for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, does that sound about right, or?
Yeah, that is.
Well. All right, here we are.
Been Lime Rock thirty years, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm back.
Call for move.
Yeah. We've got, can I get a motion on the second item, please?
We already got a motion.
You did, we did it.
Look.
All those in favor?
Yeah. There you go.
Shoot, I'm going home. All right, uh, this brings to our second public comment section on Solid Waste Authority. Is there anyone desiring to address? See you in, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn the Solid Waste Authority meeting and reconvene the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Amen.
All those in favor? Amen. Motion carries. All right.
Back up.
You back up?
All right, um, approval of the agreement with the Timber Marketing Reforestation Consulting and Forest Management Services at the Camden County Landfill.
Motion to approve.
Second. We got a first, second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Number twelve.
All right, approval of the change order to, um, to project for, with the P. Brothers, um, to deduct services and materials for the cell eight A construction at the CND landfill site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Ms. Bishop?
Thank you, Amanda.
Mr. Howard?
Nothing further than.
All right, this brings to our final public comment section. Anyone desire to address the board at this moment? This was where Mr. Manning would ordinarily appear, but he chose not.
Janet Heath, Woodbine Public Library. I approve of Mr. Cummings. Glad to hear Mr. Cummings asking you about, um, ARPA funds and how it's going to benefit our county and how they are benefiting our county. Um, we are just now beginning to hear some of the statistics from the educational losses because of COVID during the last two years, and they're, they're pretty dire. Um, some say as much as twenty years of educational effort has been lost. Um, I know that our Woodbine Public Library is in the right place at the right time when I hear these statistics because we are an outlet that people can utilize that they have not had before. It only opened during COVID and we're just going forward. In the last week's paper, there was a guest view written in Tribune and Georgian, and I would like to read it to you. Libraries, a community space for all. Libraries are special, even sacred places. Much more than a mere repository for books, libraries allow access to the world's knowledge and wisdom accumulated over the centuries. A library is a place where children discover the joy of reading and where adults continue that joy. When I was a boy, my mother took my two sisters and me each week to the Washington Library in Macon, Georgia, where I grew up, letting us wander freely to discover and check out books. In our digital age, libraries are so much more than a place for books, as wonderful as books are. Libraries are spaces for access to computers, printers, and Wi-Fi. They are a place to look for a job, a place to apply for a vocational school or college, a place to apply for veterans' benefits. Libraries are about not only education, but also economic development. In our fractured society, a library is a public space where all kinds of people can gather together. In our world today, in our counted country today, where are the public spaces where all kinds of people can still come together? A library is one of those few public spaces. When we talk about libraries, we are ultimately talking about community. It's not that we all agree with each other, but community is about asking. Do we have a seat at the table? Is our voice heard? Is anybody listening? Is anybody asking what we want? Is anybody asking what the greater community wants? Is anybody paying attention? Community means everyone, not just a certain few. Sustaining our community means working on what will endure much more than the distractions of the twenty-four hour news cycle. We focus on what is important: children, education, job opportunities, equality, and connecting ourselves locally and to the world. There is a sickness in the soul of America and we feel it. Let's work to change and heal ourselves. Let's listen to one another, take care of one another, invest in children and education, value public spaces like a library where we can all come together. Let's take the long view and plan accordingly. In a library, we remember the importance of quiet thinking and the value of facts. We remember that to be loud is not always to be right. We can restore our true selves, the angels of our better selves. Together, we can keep the promise of a better America, looking forward to tomorrow and our children's future and their children's future. We can make that all real with a library, and my words added, with a library in Woodbine, serving North Camden County. What we need for this county commission to do is to put the funding for the Woodbine Public Library back in your, in your budget. And we also need from you an MOU, an MOI, a resolution, whatever it takes, that you promise to keep this library funded and open for the people of North Camden, really for all of Camden County. And maybe we can make a difference and regain some of those educational losses that have been so severe. Thank you, and I'd like to give you a copy of this. So I'll wait till it's over and give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else desiring to address the board? All right, at this point in time, I'd like to, uh, get a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. We stand pause and we shall return. We stand paused, and we shall return.
See?
Regular meeting.
Make a motion to dismiss executive session and reconvene at regular meeting.
Second.
First, second, all those in paper.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Before we do that, there's no action taken.
Okay.
But we have spent the past hour watching a Knox's movie from our local sheriff's department. More to come.
Office.
Chair, folks, whatever you want to call it. Got a motion?
Yep, I need a second.
Got a second. All those in paper. We stand adjourned.